That means that some are all of the public body is meeting remotely and some are meeting physically in a previously noticed location where the public may attend to observe, listen and participate contemporaneously. One member of this public body or other staff is present at the location to ensure. Please note that why we will strive to provide remotely to participate in the public comment period. There may be technical difficulties or reasons that otherwise prevent or interrupt remote public participation. Therefore, it is important to note that the open meeting law only ensures the public's right to participate and comment at a public meeting by attending at the designated physical location as posted in the notice and agenda. If a member of the public or the public body has technical difficulties accessing this meeting remotely, please alert us by email to joannells@hartford-bt.org. In the event of a technical difficulty that cannot be resolved, we may continue the meeting if necessary to a time and place certain. Please note that all votes taken during the meeting that are not unanimous will be done by roll call vote in accordance with the law. As required by the open meeting law, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance of all members participating in the meeting and have those members attending remotely identify themselves to ensure that they can hear and be heard throughout the meeting. Colin Butler.
Here.
John Heath.
Yeah.
Toby Davin.
Uh, present.
Dylan Bianchi.
Here.
Dylan Christ.
Present.
Bruce Riddle.
Here.
Okay. First item of business for this meeting is a public comment. So unless we have public present, we'll go to the next item. Which is the minutes of our last meeting. Can it be true that our last meeting was October 7, 2024?
Yeah.
Raise our pay and don't meet. What's up with that?
Um, are there any uh changes that were you would like to make in these minutes?
And make a motion we improve the minutes of October 7, 2024?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, the next item is the administrative permits. Which uh are nicely listed on our agenda.
Where's the Lakeland Golf Course?
Where is it?
I've never heard of that.
It's it's part of Queche Lakes.
Has a name. I didn't know that.
And as opposed to the Highlands Golf Course.
Yeah, yeah. Hey.
The first one, Queche Mobile, are they demolishing that entire building?
The little barn structure.
Yeah.
It it's gone.
When you're facing the, there's the pumps and island and the building.
Oh, the.
That little farm.
Purple. There was a art store or something there. That's gone?
Yeah.
Oh, just that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Here's our applicant, John, just so you know. I'm gonna let him in.
Oh, thank you. Are there any other questions? Regarding the administrative approvals? Okay. The Act 250 application. Cat about self-storage on Route 14.
Is that actually?
This is the one that was uh side by side with an.
This is the first of, excuse me, this is the second of the side by side.
Yeah.
The one that had been constructed yet?
And they may have their Act 250 permit by now, but.
Yeah. Um, next is uh the Town Plan Steering Committee update. Bruce?
I have no information.
Nor do I. About the Regional Planning Commission?
So they they say that in January, and I guess we're halfway there, we will see. Uh, they'll they'll come to us, but we will begin to see maps and new rules for the land use chapter and the regional plan and how that will affect the town.
You expect to have the land use for that?
They we they said we'd probably see it in January. We're halfway through. We'll see if they make it. They're they're, they say they'll visit every town in the region and go through the, with their local planning commission and go through the land use chapter issues and the Act 250 issues that affect the town. So we'll see.
So, so they they're they'd have to have another hearing to add the planned use, the land use part?
Yeah, those hearings will take place a year from now.
Wow.
First they, first they gotta work through the issues, but they expect those hearings will start either fall of '25 or early spring of '26.
I think John was asking if we're having our January meeting now, they're not gonna come see us in January unless we call a special meeting.
We're gonna have to call a special meeting when they come knocking.
It wouldn't be part of a regular, just too much.
Too much. They're gonna.
Tonight we could have.
Yeah, they're gonna come knocking, but I hope, I hope what happens is we get this stuff, we can distribute it among everybody. People can look at it for a while, digest it, and then we can meet with them. I don't wanna do this cold turkey.
It is definitely with planning commissions as opposed as opposed to select boards?
Yes.
So I wondered whether we wanted to put the their new plan on the agenda for one of our meetings in the admin permits, just a general discussion of it. What does everybody, what do everybody think about that?
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Yeah, um, so that that that's the final hearing for that one's coming up. On King's, what do they call it? King's Fort, King's Beach? King's Farm, King's Farm. That's coming up here like next week. And then it'll come, I expect at the end of the month, the last of the commission to approve it.
So do you want it as just a general discussion in the February meeting, John? Separate from when they're gonna come present?
Yeah, I wa, I was thinking that we would do it in advance of their actually coming to us.
Well, I'm confused at this point. So they're only coming for the land use chapter?
So what they're what they're doing to rivers, they've got, they revised like seven chapters. And they want to approve those revisions and 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 recertify the regional plan with those seven chapters. At the same time, they're now gonna start working on the land use chapter. I think it's chapter two. And that that will take X number of months. There'll be hearings for that in the fall of '25, early '26. Once that chapter is approved, then they'll approve the entire um regional plan again.
But they they don't have a plan to come here and take us through the changes in all the chapters that they.
No, just the plan.
They're just gonna ask us to approve whatever they've done?
No, no, we, only the regional commissioner approves the the plan. We don't, we don't get to vote on the plan. Um, that's only at the commission level. But on the land use chapter, given the special what happened the last time, they've promised that they're gonna engage everybody and walk through there. And it's especially contentious because they've done all these revisions to Act 250. And if, and if we meet, if our town meets certain criteria, we're gonna actually gain more authority on our land use under Act 250. So people will not have necessarily have to go through an Act 250 application for some projects in town. It'll be our say exclusively. But it's pretty complicated and uh and that's why they're gonna come see everybody one at a time. We have zoning, unlike some, a lot of the towns in the region, so it has special import for us.
So because it's complicated was why I thought we might wanna have an administrative session on it.
Thank.
So we, let's wait till we get the land use section and then we'll schedule that administrative discussion, okay?
Yep.
Alright. Um. Moving on to the Climate Action Plan. Um, there was a sort of a wide-ranging meeting, wide-ranging meaning the participants came from all kinds of backgrounds in town to discuss what we foresaw as potential hazards. And uh that was conducted by the Nature Conservancy and we're due a report on that, which has not uh been published yet, as far as I know. But I must say that the situation in Los Angeles has to have all of us on tender hooks with respect to the dangers of forest fires. And I'm not sure what, if anything, can be done about them, but uh I think as we look forward to redoing the town's hazard plan in 2026, uh, we should be keeping our eye on the things that happen to people when they are, lose their housing because of forest fires. Um, I also think that uh there's a Green Mountain Power program to make the area more secure from loss of electricity uh during, during storms. I assume that includes firestorms. Uh, and a lot of it has to do with putting uh electrical wires underground rather than have them swinging in the breeze. Uh, again, uh, that's something we may wanna keep an eye on because so many people are dependent on their cell phones these days. That if they lose the power to charge their cell phones and they don't have landlines and they'd be in potentially difficult situations. So that's my climate action report for the moment. Um, next item on the agenda is our availability for the public hearing on February 24th.
Before you go on, on the, on the Green Mountain Power stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, there was, there was an article in a Thetford newspaper called Side Notes that was picked up and reported on the um Daybreak.
Yeah.
Block, you know, whatever that is. I don't know if you saw that.
I did.
But if you can get your hands on that, maybe Joanne could circulate a link to everybody, or I I can, I guess. I haven't even gone back to read the article, but it talks about uh the things that Green Mountain Power is talking about, the burying of lines, the neighborhood resiliency, where they're gonna have uh uh grids for designated areas, standalone grids.
Standalone storage.
Uh, yes, standalone storage, a lot more battery um storage. So, you know, that might be a a place for people to kind of sample what's going on in Green Mountain Power.
Yeah, I copied it, Colin. I'll I'll forward it on to Joanne.
Great, thanks, John.
Okay, who's coming on the?
I I'm available.
February.
I'll be here.
Yep, I'll be here. I think I can.
I can be there.
So what are we gonna do on the 24th?
Uh, you have five applications.
Ooh.
Now they've all.
Now that I looked at. I think I have a birthday party.
None of them are um super complicated, so. One of them is a continuance of the subdivision from tonight.
Okay, well, it sounds like uh we'll have more than a quorum.
Sounds good.
So I guess now we just have to wait for 13 minutes?
I'm gonna head downstairs for a couple of maps.
So Carl, uh, we have to wait for 6:30 to open the public hearing. Um, can you hear us okay?
We can't hear you.
Oh, we can't hear you.
Who?
Uh, the applicant's attorney. I'm just trying to make sure we have a connection. We can see you, but looks like you turned your mic off, but we can't hear you. Are you unmuted yourself? No.
How about now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
It would have been a first. You could have had a lawyer attend one of your meetings and not be heard.
Very impressive.
Yeah.
Very impressive.
So what context did you talk to her in?
She was at church.
Okay.
Yeah, this is one smart woman.
Yeah, I like both of them, yeah. She definitely has a lot of energy.
Oh, brain.
Uh huh, yeah. Move on, do, do new things, expand and.
Animals want to ready check on the span.
You can send it in.
Yeah.
Just, no, a lot, a lot, a lot of good stuff's happening there. Yeah, we're trying to expand a home repair program. Work on sort of, two things, work on larger projects, um, but also try to, you know, look at ADUs and possible duplexes, even expand a bit of that. He's, you know, we're trying to address the housing crisis locally, so. Yeah, it's a, it's a big, big job to cover, but.
Yeah. No, I was just amazed.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, she's, she's really good about getting out there, talking to people, bringing whoever will come on board in one fashion or another.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So she did a talk or?
No, she's just comes to church if you like.
Okay, what church is that?
Um, Church of Christ at Dartmouth.
Okay.
Kind of, for a lot of people, you never value its neutral territory.
Uh huh.
So.
Why don't religion and what, I don't know.
No.
All it takes.
Well, it's, you know, it's a Protestant, non-denominational.
Yeah.
No, there's no covenant, but also um um, you know, you're not meeting your select board there. So, yeah. So Dylan, what are you doing these days?
Paperwork.
Oh, my condolences.
Trying to pick up the pieces for my summer. I had some good help and I had some not good help. Just having to put it all together before I send in my, call it a box installer, everything. In case the feds decide to audit.
I think as a a week from today or so, three to seven days, all that will disappear.
A little tidbit I'll pass on, I ran into uh Brian Gazza the other day and uh had a brief uh discussion about the staffing at DPW and uh he said he was fully staffed on the highway side and that uh he was uh almost staffed on the other side.
It's good. It's been a light winter.
That's a plus.
Yeah. It's been a light winter for the snow blow up guys.
So Bruce, with the Town Plan Steering Committee, has that just been on hold? What do you mean?
It's on, well, it's on hold because Lori and Matt are overwhelmed. So they.
And they're gonna stop you know.
Yeah, well, they.
This needs to be done by some.
It's supposed to be done, it's supposed to have been done months ago.
Yeah.
Did they make the hire yet?
No, we interviewed somebody last week and we're gonna have a second interview with them next week.
So that's the new housing coordinator?
Yeah, I heard about that.
So that, she believes that will kickstart these two things. All. So.
We were pretty close on it. Senior, we just needed to find the revisions on some of that stuff.
Yeah.
Yes, we kept on changing things at that, so.
Yeah, change, change, change.
Jean knows putting out the sidewalk project. This coming season.
I don't know.
Been with the designers the other day on site just to go over what we did, make sure they had all our stuff right.
Oh, good. You're probably glad there's no snow out there then. Wouldn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
I noticed that they have taken down the house at the corner of Hickory Ridge and Sykes. And looks like they're starting to do some work on that site.
Yeah, that house went down in an hour, it seemed like. I hate to see them take houses down, but what are you gonna do?
A lot of beds being put in its place though, so.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and um I met with um Andrew Winters and he said they're gonna do their part. It's coming on.
Oh, good.
So that's, you know.
That was a big question mark.
It was, I thought at the end of the hearings, but I guess they think they can pull the rabbit out of the hat. Maybe two or three rabbits. So that, you know, that's all good.
You put out an end to project survey after the road construction?
I filled it out.
I've never seen so many people fill out a survey.
You got a good response on that one, huh?
Hundreds and hundreds.
Really?
Responses. I think we had like 380 something responses.
Wow. Chris, I I was buttoning whole people. Did you fill it out? Did you fill it out?
I had 35 pages of typed out comments.
Any of them positive?
Trickle did.
Was the bike lane mentioned at all?
Uh, there, there, that might have been a uh.
Those were the positive comments.
Love the bike lane.
I sent the Secretary of Transportation a blistering letter on the new bridge.
Oh?
I hate the new bridge.
Why?
Why?
There are four things that are, four, I think there are four problems with the bridge. One, obviously, is the lighting.
It's too bright.
It's gonna get fixed, I'm told.
It is.
Can fix. Second thing is the intersection. It's just, and you see people tell me, they're seeing people just come right off the bridge, right up Christian Street.
It's too tempting.
It's too tempting and the stop sign's not picking up. They're just blistering through it.
If you're, and people have been blistering through there for so many years, it's hard to change habits.
Yeah, and then going the other way, you gotta stick your nose out so far to see what's coming.
Headed north.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can barely see.
Yeah. Um, um, and then the sidewalk, the sidewalk's terrible. It's a terrible sidewalk.
What's wrong with sidewalk?
So, and this has already happened. Snow comes, cloud goes through, all the snow goes on the sidewalk. Completely packed up in the sidewalk. DPW comes along. Hours later, day later, clears it out, cloud comes through again, back on the sidewalk. And because it's a solid concrete wall there, there is no place for that snow to go. It's solid. And so people are walking down from Twin Pine to go to the euphemistically, let's call it the gas station grocery store. They're having to walk in the street again.
Isn't that closed?
Jakes?
Jakes still.
Yeah.
In Hartford Village?
Wasn't, wasn't there an old grocery store at one point? It's not, it's just the gas station.
It's a gas station, but the people use it to buy their groceries there. That's the sad thing. So that's what I just think, you know. And then the access to the sidewalk on either end is just, just you take your life in your own hands to get to the sidewalk. You know, it just was not, was incomplete. It's not a well-thought design. And as I said to him, just reinforces my belief that B-Trans hates pedestrians. Pedestrians are just casual thing. I didn't get a response, of course, but I felt better.
Time it does. Well, how do you feel better?
Yeah. With the sidewalk thing, you know, if we want a walkable community, which is the, everybody says they want a walkable community. It's gotta be walkable all year round and we've gotta fix this snow removal, especially on the bridges. Figure out how to do this better and not keep building the same, because now we're stuck with this bridge for 40 years.
Hundred years.
Okay, I'll be dead and I'll be dead, you know, long ago, but you know, it just it'd be nice to be able to walk across that bridge. And it's not gonna be, and 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 even on the best of circumstances, when they're slushing the highway, you walk across that bridge, you're gonna get drenched. These cars just take all, because you know, it's got the pitch, right? And the pitch is towards sidewalk and so the truck hits that thing and just all that stuff comes on your clothes.
I think it pitches the other way.
It's still.
I think all the scuppers are on the other side.
It's still a little pitch.
Is it?
It's.
Okay. It's time, folks. Time to begin. I will open the uh, the public uh hearing portion of our meeting. Uh, tonight, that's Application 24. Um, procedure of letting the applicant and Joanne describe what the application's all about. And we'll have an opportunity for the commissioners to uh. ask questions, make comments. And then we'll open it up to comments from interested persons or from the general public. And then the commissioners will have a chance to discuss it again. And then we should act on it. So that's the procedure we're gonna follow. Have we got, have we got more people on the call yet? For the Zoom yet?
The applicant's attorney Carl Listman is on the call. I don't think we expect anyone else.
Okay. So you wanna take the lead on this, Joanne?
Excuse me, John, you've got to administer an oath.
Okay. You're right. Thank you, Bruce. It was under my hybrid script. Meeting page, that's why I didn't jump on that.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
My name is Carl Listman. I affirm that the testimony that I'm about to give in this matter is the truth and the whole truth.
Ah, but is it the truth under the paints and penalty?
It is indeed.
Okay, then we're all set. All right, so where were we? Joanne?
Yeah, there's, I'll give you, there's not much to this. This is one of the easiest applications that you hear. The applicants are annexing about 0.5 acres from lot 1418VV1 to lot 1418, uh, 14181. Sorry, 1418VV1, 1 and 2 to lot 14181. They've noted that the lot line adjustment is needed because according to the record titles, a small portion of the Piplin building is on the lands of Geary. A full boundary survey was recently undertaken for the Geary property, but a full boundary survey for Piplin has not been performed. Given the very small portion of land that's transferring, the waiver appears justified under our subdivision regulations. Carl, I don't know if you have anything to add as far as the application or the background?
I'm always hesitant to put my foot in my mouth, but this, this happened because the two properties were once, one property that was the old Howard Johnson's Motor Inn and Restaurant. And when the restaurant and the inn was, were separated, there was some confusion about where the common boundary was. Over time, the inside of the property became the property of the Larkin family partnership based in Burlington. When it went to sell its property to the Geary group out of Rhode Island, the surveyor said, hey, do you know that part of your record title includes part of the Piplin building? When we discovered that, we, we, that is to say, Larkin selling to Geary and Piplin agreed that we would adjust the boundary so that the Piplin building was on the Piplin property. And after much gnashing of teeth and machinations and surveyors, we were able to file the application that's before you. In essence, what it does is it confirms what the people thought they owned to be what they do own.
Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments to make? Colin?
Yeah, I have a couple. I guess at some point in the not-too-distant past, there must have been a subdivision petition that the town of Hartford dealt with, this planning commission dealt with sometime in the last few years, when the property was divided between Piplin and, or Larkin and this new Geary or Geary or whatever they are. Was there a survey done at that point that indicated that part of the building was gonna go with the subdivided parcel?
I don't have a good answer for you because I got involved only in 2000 when the Larkin family bought the property, the inn property. That subdivision of the inn and the lodge happened, I think in the 1980s. And I don't know that I have a specific answer about whether there was a survey done back then.
So I did, I have a little bit I can add to that, I think. In 2004, the planning commission approved a lot line adjustment. And Carl, that's the reference, the lot line adjustment in 2004 was recording it, recorded in hanging file 506A, which is what Nate Jaeger, the surveyor, notes as the problem that's being corrected in notes. What note is it? Notes six on his survey, so I think that was the last time you, the planning commission, saw any sort of changes to the lot lines and that this is to correct a previous error. Does that sound correct, Carl?
Yes. Thank you.
I guess, probably irrelevant, but just an observation. As a planning commissioner sitting here, if somebody came and asked for a subdivision request and they drew a line, a proposed line down the middle of a building, I'd probably ask, is that what you really intend to do? So at some point, I would presume that somebody in the petitioners for this thing years ago must have answered that, oh yeah, that's what we, what we wanted. But it's just inconceivable to me that the original line that we're looking at now was a mistake.
Well, in 2004, it looked like the line that was approved went on the interior of that covered walkway and that's.
Well, that's what that long stretch, that's what I thought.
And so that's, that's what happened and nobody, I don't know what happened in 2004, if anybody questioned it.
What about the big square at the bottom of that? What does that represent? If you look at.
The reverse dog leg?
Yeah, the reverse dog leg. I, you know, I've walked in that corridor a bunch of times and I kind of assumed that that long narrow strip probably is the car. And maybe the intent was to demolish the corridor. But, and that never happened, but that doesn't explain the big square at the bottom of that car. You know, it's probably irrelevant, but it's, 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 the question I'm asking is gonna lead to something that I want to see happen. I don't think that we should be excusing Piplin from doing a full survey of the entire property so that we can be fully aware of any other errors that might have made. If, if, if you're, if you're suggesting that this correction now is to correct an error, how many other errors are in that Piplin property that should be uncovered by a full survey? If we excuse the petitioner from doing a survey and then a couple of years from now, they come back in saying, well, we've got a similar circumstance on the other side of the property and we want another boundary line adjustment, I'm gonna be a little disappointed that we didn't take the time now to sort it all out. I'm kind of getting ahead of the discussion by saying that, but that's, that's where I'm coming from. And then another question for you, Mr. Listman, and I'm, I'll be all done. As I was reviewing this material a couple of weeks ago, I noticed that it looked like Piplin had transferred this Piplin parcel to the US government back in April, March, or May, May, I think, of last year. And so I would have assumed it would be the US government coming in here asking for the correction. And I'm, I'm looking at the Vermont parcel map to make that statement because it shows that the US government is actually the owner of that Piplin parcel at this point. So I'm presuming that's some kind of error, but can you explain what, what the US government is doing in the middle of all this and whether they actually did own it for a period of time?
I cannot explain that. I'm not aware of it. I have been dealing with Piplin's lawyer for more than a year on this boundary issue. And at no time was there any mention ever made that the government might be involved. We have a number of documents that have been signed by the parties over this period of time in which each represents that it is the owner of the property in question. So I'm surprised when you tell me that the government is involved.
Well, you know, it could be an error in the, in the mapping and I'm, I'm looking at mapping that's not what the town relies on. They, they look at something from Beacon, I believe, but which does show Piplin as the owner. But the Vermont parcel mapping system would show the US government as the owner. And I actually took a screenshot of that and sent it to Joanne a little while ago. And I apologize for bringing this up in the meeting and not having resolved it earlier, but I was a little bit confused and thought this hearing was the hearing that was withdrawn from tonight's agenda. And so I didn't focus any attention on it, but I can tell you all about D Felice if you want.
Yeah, Carl, I don't have any information that, when Colin got ahold of me earlier, that shows any involvement by the government. I, I look at the property information the assessors have on Beacon and the Pippins have owned the property for quite some time.
I'm not in a position to add to that.
Is it possible that maybe the SBA foreclosed on a, on a loan to Piplin and took control of the parcel and then Piplin recovered it or something? Is that? I mean, that's the only thing that comes to my mind that could possibly explain what the government's doing in the middle of this thing.
I don't have an answer.
Yeah, the only concern I have, and I, again, it's probably immaterial, but these documents show that Pipins owned the property since 2008, which, which won't be true if the government was the owner for some period of time back in May. I don't know if that matters to anybody or not.
Well, it's, it's part of our findings. So if, if it's, it's not true, then our findings need to be changed.
Mr. Chair, we would certainly agree to a condition that the applicants be required to provide evidence that Piplin owns the Piplin parcel. Because if it doesn't, then we have bigger issues to fry than this adjustment.
Right.
Well, I'm not a real estate law expert, Mr. Listman, but from what I know, title to the property in Hartford land records is in Piplin. So it seems to me that somehow we ought to just be able to figure out how the US government's name got on the map that Colin's describing.
Maybe it's, maybe it's just not important. I think if we follow what Mr. Listman was suggesting and just ask the two petitioners, the co-petitioners, to prove their ownership, that's, that's been to solve that problem, I guess.
So I guess, has any of the commissioners seen this map that Mr. Beller's referring to? Cause I have not.
It's, it's available online, Dylan, but.
No, but it's not part of our.
No, no, it's just something I, whenever these sorts of things come up, I just refer to that for help on boundaries and abutters and that sort of thing, just to kind of get the lay of the land. And it just struck me as odd that the ownership seemed to be in the US government for this parcel and not Piplin.
All right, but I think that information should be shared ahead of time rather than at the meeting.
Well, I explained that a minute ago. I thought this was the hearing that was being delayed at some future point. So I didn't do any more homework on it after discovering this a couple of weeks ago.
Joanne, do you wanna weigh in?
I was just trying to share what Colin sent me this afternoon.
Oh, yeah.
Can everyone see that? Folks at home, see that?
It's small, but yes.
If you go to the right-hand edge of that, Joanne, scroll up just a little bit. There, there you go, in the top right where it says closing date, 24/5/16, Piplin is the seller, buyer is the United States of America. Department of something.
Colin, where does it show where this is?
Right here. I don't know where they got their information. I mean.
Yeah, above is a little bit of boilerplate at the very top of that record that says that the town's grand list isn't up to date with the latest purchase and sales information. And they try to share that in that, in that note.
I mean, over on the left, it's, VCGI coordinates the collection of the best available digital parcel data from municipalities and publishes them in a uniform GIS format. Join with the annual grid.
Then I thought I had, John, was, the surveyor has provided a recent survey and they note that Piplin is the owner. The survey that was provided in your packet.
Well, it sounds like the petitioner is willing to conditionally look into this to sort it out.
Yeah, that's an easy condition that for us to add.
Right. I don't, I don't think this has to hang anything up. I think if we just ask the petitioners to prove ownership, demonstrate ownership, then that's fine.
No, I, I would prefer that the question that's been raised by your, the map you just showed, Joanne just showed, be answered.
As opposed to a conditional approval?
No, no, I, we should, we should go ahead and do the approval based upon satisfactory evidence, I guess, that the the map that shows the US government ownership is incorrect.
I'm done.
So do we solve that by having condition to have the applicant show proof of ownership? I don't know who to contact at this state map place to, to, you know, so try and sort it out with them. I think Carl can certainly talk to the Pipins and make sure there was no transfer to the government at some point. I, I. Carl can certainly talk to the Pipins and make sure there was no transfer to the government at some point. I, I, I I mean, Mark's talked to me about, that Mark Pippin has talked to me about this application, is aware of it. I don't think there's any question that they don't own it. And I can't speak to what uh, Colin found online, but we can certainly just, I think, address that by having a condition for the owners to show proof of ownership.
The town recognizes that they own it, not the U.S. government, so, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I I generally agree, but I I mean, this discrepancy bothers me. And I'd like to know why there is a discrepancy here. It, it doesn't have to be a condition. It, it doesn't have to be anything other than let's find out why there's this discrepancy.
We can certainly provide you with that information. I'm thinking aloud. What we would do is give you a copy of the deed by which Pippin acquired the property. Copy of the page from the grand list book that shows Pippin is the owner of the property. Maybe, I don't know, I'm not as close to the town clerk, this town clerk as I have been to prior town clerks. But maybe something that there's nothing recorded in the land records showing that the government now owns the Pippin property.
Subsequent to the grand list.
Subsequent to the grand list, yes.
That all sounds good to me. Or we, you, you know, if you, if you went to the very top of this parcel mapping system, there's probably boiler, I hadn't looked for it, there's probably boilerplate saying, do not make official legal, you know, it's, it's probably, it's probably not to be used for the purpose that I'm using.
Yeah, I, I would rely on the surveyor versus
Yes.
that online stuff. But anyway,
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Uh, John Heath, any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Toby?
No, I'm all set.
Phil and Beatty?
No comments or questions?
Phil and Chris?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Bruce?
I'm good.
John, John, I, I do have one other that just came to mind. I'm, I, I'm not familiar with zero lot line situations. Uh, I, I guess this is going to be one of them. The, the edge of the building will be the lot line. And using Google Maps, uh, there's a set of doors on the restaurant end of that building that will now enter out onto the other parcel. So what do you do in a situation like that? You know, those, those could be fire doors, emergency exits, and the person could open the door to exit the building and find a brick wall built by the abutting property owner. What is a zero lot line situation ideal there? Should, should a door open onto somebody else's property?
Are you looking at what's labeled hotel entrance spindle square? Not sure what door you're
If, if you go to the very top of that dog leg, the very top of that little narrow strip, that's the, that's the front corner of the old Hojo's Restaurant building.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a door that opens to the side to the right on these drawings. East, I guess.
That's down here.
Yeah, right there.
And he said the top of the dog leg.
There, there's also a door at the other end of that, but I think it's the, the door at the other end is clearly on the Jerry property, not on the Pippin property. Uh, but at the very other end, the high end in this, in these drawings, there is a door that exits onto Jerry's property. Or will.
I, I have two responses to that. The first is that there isn't going to be a building that close to the boundary unless the town of Hartford allows it. And I suspect it would have the same fire emergency concern that you would have. The other response is that we've done a conditional agreement that will become effective when the subdivision is approved by you and Act two fifty and A N R that allows for access to the Jerry property from the Pippin property for repairs and emergencies.
So along that whole zero lot line for new boundary, Pippin will be able to work on Jerry's land to maintain the building?
Yes.
Shouldn't there be an easement stipulating that or?
There is one. That's what I'm describing to you.
We can get a copy of that as part of the conditions.
Okay. Um, that's, that's not shown in any of this material, is it, Joanne?
Correct.
Okay.
Because it's not, it's not part of the adjustment. The boundary adjustment.
Oh, it's an existing easement?
It's a document that has been signed and is being held in escrow pending approval of the subdivision.
Okay.
That's a good point.
I'm all done.
Shall we close the hearing?
Yeah, so I'd make a motion to postpone the hearing application twenty-four fifteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I make a motion to postpone application twenty-four fifteen as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, hang on a sec.
Aye.
The amendments are the proof of ownership
And a copy of the easement.
Easement or whatever agreement. I'm good.
Okay.
Yep.
So does everybody vote yes?
No. I don't think anybody, somebody did.
I think we kinda got in the middle of
I interrupted the vote because I thought we needed a moment of discussion before the vote occurred.
Maybe it's be helpful just to recall that, John.
Okay. Well, nobody needs to make a motion.
No, the, the motion's fine. The motion, the second stand.
Okay, most of them. I'm asking if all are in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
I think you're all set there, Mr. Listman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it.
Sorry, I'll get this, uh, decision amended and signed and mailed up to you with instructions on, uh, closing things out.
Great. Hopefully I'll have responses to you before you send that. Nice to see you too. Be well, everyone.
Well, thank you.
Take care.
Thank you. Good night.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It's nice to see everybody. Happy New Year.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Night, all.
Good night.
So there are about twenty people downstairs. Like, well, nobody in the overflow room. They're all in the boardroom. Mr. Hoyt isn't even there, apparently.